Regional ties and the national reach. And we were consistently named one of the top performing lobbying firms by Bloomberg Government every year. Um, this is, oh, let me go to the next, there we go, technology. So this is our team, uh, that works on the Virginia Beach, um, uh, Virginia Beach account and for the city. Um, myself and Anthony are the co-leads, but we also have, uh, some experts in very specific areas. Grants, Amanda Wood, Clarence Williams does a great deal of, um, domestic policy, uh, and, uh, and opportunity fund, uh, opportunity zone type work, housing. Um, and then Omar Franco, who is one of our gurus when it comes to appropriations, uh, used to be the chief of staff for a Republican member of Congress who was, uh, uh, one of the Cardinals and the House, uh, House Appropriations Committee. Um, so, uh, just by way of background, Alfonso Lopez, I've been in, uh, doing federal and state, uh, legislative transaction work for 30 years. I'm a former U.S. Senate staffer, also the former assistant administrator of the U.S. Small Business Administration under President Barack Obama. Before that, I was the director of all federal and congressional affairs for Virginia under, uh, then Governor Tim Kaine's administration. I'm currently a, uh, this is my seventh term also in the Virginia House of Delegates, now representing the third district. And, um, I'm also by way of background in a previous firm, uh, back called, uh, called Anefeo that I was a partner at, I also represented the city of Virginia Beach in the late nineties through 2005, before I went to the Kaine administration. Um, my partner is, uh, the amazing Anthony Bedell, uh, former deputy assistant secretary for Congressional Intergovernmental Affairs for the U.S. Department of Transportation. Um, he has, uh, under, uh, then Secretary Elaine Chao, uh, he has forgotten more about infrastructure policy, uh, than most people ever learn. Um, he is a legend in Washington, D.C. And I, I count myself lucky that I get to work with him, uh, every day on for the city of Virginia Beach. He's also had key role, yeah, he's also had key roles at the Department of Labor, um, U.S. Small Business Administration, has 24 years of federal, state, and local experience. And he was recently named one of the most influential lobbying firepowers in D.C. by Politico. Um, also, yeah, there you go. Um, also, he's on the, yeah. Yeah. Also, he's on the VCU Board of Directors or Board of Visitors and also a member of the, um, Northern Virginia Transportation, uh, Administration Authority. And also, he's a new member of the Metro Reform Commission, um, here in Virginia. Um, let me just say one thing also, um, that I really appreciate about our firm and what we're able to do for the city is because of our bipartisan nature, um, we're able to play the highest levels in D.C., um, with both sides of the aisle and also with the, uh, the Biden administration. Um, and so what we've been able to do is, I think, really be productive and bring a lot of success back to the, the city. Um, and that's going to be borne out in some more of the slides we see. We've had a very successful 2023, um, working with, and let me just say this before I, before I go on. Your staff in the city, and I'm not just talking in the mayor's office, I'm not just talking in the city manager's office with the incredible, sort of the incomparable Brent McKenzie and Andrew Damon, who are rock stars. And that's a technical term, rock star. Your staff across the city administration is incredible, just truly exceptional. When, and I hope you realize that, like, when we are calling up, when we are calling up folks like Stanley and, and Shannon from Public Works, when we're calling up any agency office, when we need an answer quickly so that we can actually help deliver something on a dime for the city, they have literally never failed us. They are friendly, intelligent, brilliant, and they really care about making the city a better place. And so I cannot thank you enough for, uh, the amazing relationship we were able to have with, uh, your staff. Um, so we have pursued a fairly aggressive strategy again this year, um, on behalf of the city, uh, taking advantage of several federal opportunities, not only federal grants and the historic infrastructure legislation that's been in place for two years, but also the return of congressionally directed spending, which we used to call earmarks. Um, we're very proud to report that in terms of increased revenue funding and grants for the city, policy support, and federal approval for city initiatives, we've had once again an incredibly successful year. Proof is in the pudding. Um, forty, uh, forty-nine point five million dollars in federal grant funding, which is an increase from last year, forty-eight point four million. Um, and we've also secured and preliminary funding, seven point nine million for, uh, several of your top priorities. So you can't really read this, apologize about the size, but we've gotten around fourteen point nine million for Safe Streets and Roads, a grant award, uh, K through 12 education at military-connected schools and community investment grants, thirteen point four million, uh, three point nine million for Homeland Security grants specifically as it relates to FEMA, uh, six point four million for home investment partnership and housing opportunities and the family self-sufficiently grant program, um, seventy-two thousand from the Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program, and then one point five million in pass-through for the law enforcement training facility project. We also have four earmarks that we are, um, still working on because of, and I'll explain this in a second, the unique nature of what's happening in Congress right now. Um, for Rudy Inlet, three point nine million, three million for Alaskan Road, FAS-1B, uh, six hundred ninety-three thousand for the, uh, Creed's Training Facility, and then four hundred thousand for the Virginia Beach and Vicinity Coastal Zone Management Study through the Army Corps. So our priorities for next year are similar, uh, but we also are excited about working with your team to address what's coming next. So we're going to be working with T-HUD, Transportation Housing Urban Development, Labor, uh, Health and Human Services, uh, um, Criminal Justice, uh, we're going to be pursuing, uh, congressional earmarks again for the FY25 process. Um, we're also going to be doing some congressional authorizations through the Water Resources Development Act reauthorization and the ten by six, uh, comprehensive regional coastal storm management study update that we're doing. Um, we're going to be working on some brick funding for flooding and storm resiliency, uh, police and fire department projects through COPS and AFG, and then also really trying to take advantage of some of the infrastructure bill, um, funding that's available right now. It's five times the typical level. Um, so, but here's the concern that we've been dealing with for the last year or so. Um, we now are going to be having, um, a unique period for the, uh, for Congress. We have sort of parallel tracks happening as it relates to the FY24 and the FY25, uh, federal appropriations process. And I won't get into the weeds about why this is happening, but, uh, understand that we are still waiting on, um, the federal appropriations for FY24 to be finalized by Congress. And so the four projects we have for Creed's, uh, the three by three by three, which is now the ten by six project and the two other, uh, projects, it's going to take, I think, at least until this spring, early spring, to finalize that process. While we're also working on your FY25 appropriations requests and the Warder request, the Water Resources Development Act. Um, uh, uh, and so it's not difficult, we can do two things at once, we can work in parallel, but this is sort of emblematic of what's happening in, in Washington, D.C. right now. Um, and then can you speak, Anthony, to a little bit to the, um, the two deadlines that are coming?
So Congress will be back next week and their first deadline is, uh, January nineteenth for half of the federal government to be, will be funded through that. And then the second deadline is, uh, February second, I think?
February second.
Yeah. And that was the other half of the government that they extended what's called a continuing resolution through. This will hopefully allow them, the House, to pass their last appropriations bills so then the House and the Senate can conference and come to a deal. But those are the looming deadlines and it's anyone's guess on how this is going to play out, given, you know, the past of, of last year. Hopefully this year brings better cooperation and so we'll see how that plays out. We're uniquely positioned with both sides to make sure that we have the intelligence that is going on that we'll pass on to Brent and Andrew so they can pass it on to you. But that's, the two-tiered deadline was designed to trigger a deal and so we'll see if that actually happens. And as Al Farzad said, while all that's happening, we still have to start on your FY25 appropriations priorities too. So that's basically the situation.
Um, and so I think, uh, just to piggyback on something that Anthony just said, I think we're uniquely, um, situated and qualified to actually address, um, any kind of situation that might happen because of our relationships on both sides of the aisle and the trust we have with, um, several members of the U.S. Senate and the, and the House in, in key positions. Um, let's go to the last slide. Um, so looking ahead, uh, in a nutshell, we are working on FY25 appropriations as well as FY24 appropriations. We're going to be looking for some raised grants for highway intermodal, uh, transportation. We're definitely going to be continuing infrastructure bill funding. Uh, we want to focus on stormwater.
If I can add, there's only three years left of the bipartisan infrastructure bill money. And then the money reverts back to fighting over the normal appropriations table scraps. So we have been very aggressive with your team to pursue those buckets of money while they're still here because I don't think that kind of infrastructure money will be around in our lifetimes again.
Right. Um, that's exactly right. And so we're also going to be working on some brick grants, uh, anything you might need in terms of, of, of negotiated, uh, agreements with federal agencies, including the, um, help with the Army Corps as well as the local military installations, and then also, uh, Community Development HUD funding, and then, uh, any opportunity for, um, crime prevention or, or, or CGS or COPS grants. Also, we'd like to think about ways we can work with you on some museum and education funding and library funding and, uh, ways that we can maybe assist with the K through 12 this year as well. Lastly, um, before we take your questions, I, once again, I have to thank you. Um, you really do have an amazing team with Brent and Andrew and all of the leadership and the various agencies across the city. And we really do appreciate the work and how seamless our work has been with your team and with the members of the city council.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
And congratulations on the success. It's always good to see increase in funding. We were recently, as you noted, awarded the fourteen point nine million SS4A grant. And I believe is this, that's the city's first award associated with the IIJ and BIO program or?
I think it was, according to Brent, is that true? Um, and then that grant, or we're actually, um, the fourteen point nine million is, um, the grant funding agreement is pending, but that's a fairly quick process.
That was my next question. Um, what does that look like from the time of the announcement to us drafting the ordinance?
Well, usually those full funding grant agreements take six to eight months. So it depends on US DOT's backlog on those.
Okay.
But that's usually the time for it.
I'm just going to add, sorry, um, we have a meeting where I can, sorry.
We need you at the microphone.
Apologize.
Introduce yourself.
Okay. I apologize. Katie, Katie Shannon with Public Works Engineering. Um, so as far as the grant agreement goes, we've already been contacted by FHWA. They are going to take the lead with us and be our point of contact from grant agreement through completion of the project. We have a meeting set up with them on February seventh, they're coming down. So the grant agreement templates haven't even been released yet for Safe Streets for All, they come out in mid-January. So we'll get to review that right before he comes down and we'll be able to hit the ground running from there.
And is that, you, you named, you said like an acronym?
Oh, FHWA, the Federal Highway Administration.
Okay. And is this, it's not based on who's in line first, we're?
Um, so, uh, this Safe Streets for All is a nationally competitive grant. Our contact representative is the Virginia FHWA, um, individual. So he has coordinated his schedule with all the other recipients. There was actually Richmond, I believe, a ten million dollar award. So he'll be hitting both Virginia Beach and Richmond at the same time.
Okay. So with that process, are we looking at the quoted six to eight months or could it be quicker?
This is a good sign that this will be expedited quickly.
So from when it was awarded, which was December, I was saying three to six months is what I believed to get the agreement in place. So what we have to do is we'll get the agreement, um, we'll review it, we'll send it to the city attorney's office, they'll make sure the language is okay, you know, it depends on the agreement, sometimes there's a back and forth with the organization. Um, our side is typically very fast, city attorney's office and the city manager's office always, you know, jumps right on it. And then to be fully executed though, it has to go back to the Federal Highway Administration and then they have to sign it. So those are kind of out of our hands, um, but we're thinking three to six months will be typical.
And it appears our team is kind of ahead of track, being that the, uh, city council adopted the Active Transportation Plan and I understand that met the S.
The COM.
A4A requirement?
Correct, yep. So we are ahead of schedule on a couple of fronts. Um, the, the Safe Streets for All grant required a comprehensive safety action plan. Because this was a trail in what our council adopted Active Transportation Plan held, it met the requirements. We are also actively working on a, just a citywide active transfer, uh, comprehensive safety action plan. We've already had a public meeting in November and, um, we have another one coming up in the spring and then by summertime, we're hoping to be able to brief council on the final report and request adoption. So we'll have that process where we come back and forth. And that will be able to, you know, meet several federal grant requirements on having, the city having a comprehensive safety action plan. And then as far as being ahead on the grant, we did get a federal earmark for this project last December for seven hundred and fifty thousand through HUD. Um, so that, we were able to start design, you know, right away, uh, not without waiting for the grant agreement to be completely in place. So we do have, you know, a, um, a bit of a head start, which is nice.
And finally, thank you for, um, answering these questions. We had, last week, we had a near fatal miss, uh, fatality, near miss at Independence and I've had several constituents reach out about what we're doing to prevent fatalities. Um, are you confident that this comprehensive eligible safety plan is going to address that requirement?
Yes, we have already gone out, you know, I would defer to Rick Lilman, who's our traffic engineer, um, one of my colleagues in Public Works, um, he'd be able to obviously provide additional information. However, my group engineering support and Rick's group in traffic engineering are working on the comprehensive safety action plan together. And, um, we're going out to the public, we're seeing where their issues are, we're analyzing kind of weaknesses within our current system and identifying projects and prioritizing them. That's kind of part of what the plan will hold. Um, you know, unfortunately, I did hear about the, the issue this weekend, um, the VB Trail, the nice thing about that, I, you know, it's a parallel essentially to Virginia Beach Boulevard. It does take pedestrians and cyclists away from vehicular traffic, they'll have their own area, and it does include a pedestrian bridge over Independence. Now, the Virginia Beach Independence, um, intersection, as it stands, it does have crosswalks and PED signals, um, buttons to push and stuff, um, but I would have to defer to Rick and the police on as far as, you know, the specifics of the accident.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Good, Barbara?
Sorry.
No, it was great.
We were discussing the activity that you've been able to address. This was one of the projects that I couldn't help but think about because I know we've been applying for this every year for many years and thought it was probably out of reach. Wasn't there a time when there was just very little money available for, for trails and transportation? But unfortunately, that was all we were able to get, whatever it was. So is there some reason there's an additional pot of money now that we might be able to? I mean, we really had, thought this was an impossibility because of the meager amounts that we were able to get, but it was all that we had for doing trails. But this one is really one of those things that we, uh, had sort of given up on.
Yes, ma'am, there will be opportunities to continue to pursue for this remaining three years. We'll, we'll identify and work with the team on where we can possibly continue to make that appeal to, to win a grant for the city.
And, and just to piggyback on that, also, the, the fact that we got the seven hundred thousand dollars in the previous earmark with the delegation, uh, working together, that was able to, uh, really enable us to, to have a much more effective argument when we were going to the grant process.
Right. And once you begin a project, being able to go forward with the other phases, this puts us in a, I mean, a possibility that we really do think this is, uh, an ongoing thing that once we have gotten some funding for it, it's more likely that we'll be able to get more for the other phases?
Yes, and we will try. It doesn't guarantee it because it's still a competitive, nationally competitive program. But, yeah, I think showing and being shovel-ready, like, what we're going to be doing is important for this administration. They want to get that money out and get those infrastructure projects started right away.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else familiar, and then Michael?
Thank you again for your presentation. I want to address, um, two areas on your last page that you had looking ahead. As vice president for the Virginia Transit Association, which I am, I wanted to know a little bit more where you mentioned highway intermodal. Explain a little bit further about that.
Sure, those are just, uh, there wasn't anything specific, but those are general terms that we would want to work with the city and the team on about whether projects you want to pursue that fit into that, um, bigger umbrella. And so that's basically everything in the bipartisan infrastructure bill, which we have three years of funding left. And so that, we, we would look to pursue whatever important projects that, that you and the city manager put on our priority list.
Basically, whatever becomes a part of your CIP, those will be our priorities as we go forward.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael? Thank you for your presentation and for all your great work. I want to, I'm so pleased to, um, hear the added museum and library funding as part of your presentation. I remember your presentation from last year and that was one of the questions that I had. Um, I'm aware that there's IMLS, um, grant opportunities that are available, um, in many different categories. And so I guess my question is, question slash comment for you and for our staff as well is what do we need to do? What's next steps do we need to take in order to set ourselves up to be qualified for those things? Now, this council, before you answer, this council identified in our last retreat, um, arts and culture as one of our strategic priorities. And, uh, we're working toward, uh, what policy direction, you know, that will entail. And I'm, I'm hoping that this could be part of that, um, kind of sort of comprehensive effort. And so in order to really access those, we need to be set up to be eligible. So what do we need to do in order to do that?
Well, I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but basically what we do is we work with, um, your city manager and with Brent and the team, and we basically figure out what your priorities are. And when you come, give us your priorities, then we try to find where the, um, so if it's going to be museum or arts or something along those lines, um, there's a limited amount of money on IMLS, it's not a large amount of money. And so if that's one of your priorities, that's, we'll, we'll go after that. But we'll work with you over the next several weeks, next couple of months, to actually put together a appropriations request or a grant request, depending on when those things become available. And so, um, it's really incumbent upon you to decide what you want to make your priorities. And once you've done that, then we can sort of go forward and make sure that we're aggressively going after the, the project funding where it might be, um, available.
Thank you. And just for the body, a follow-up to that, I would say that we have a lot of opportunities in front of us. Um, of course, we've received briefings about the aquarium. Federal participation can be a great way to help to negotiate through the challenges that may exist there. Similarly, Virginia Moca is, um, is going to be building a new camp, a new campus, a new building, and maybe a federal partnership could be in order for capital, uh, costs or for operational support, enhanced operational support. So I do think, and whether it's IMLS or other sort of, um, humanities funding that's available, I don't know what all the buckets are. I think we do have some opportunities and, and really good ones in Virginia Beach, um, that could really enhance, um, our ability to deliver on that priority.
And we'll work closely with the, the city manager and, and your staff to actually determine where those opportunities might be. But I will, I will caution that some of those pockets, the pockets of money are not as big or as robust as some others. And so, um, it's unclear whether or not you could get, you know, tens of millions of dollars for something as opposed to a few hundred thousand dollars for something. Just be aware of that.
Okay, work, Rosemary, then work.
Thank you for coming down and doing the presentation. And when we, we know that y'all have been rock stars for us and being able to help, yes, being able to help deliver the goods and the bacon. Um, I, I'm assuming that the close to four million for Rudy Inlet, that's for dredging? Is that for, mostly for dredging?
Um, yeah, uh, so no, the Rudy Inlet, let me just make sure I have that correct, is yes. Yes, it is. And just want to make sure I have the right terminology. Um, yeah, the Rudy Inlet project through the Army Corps, all dredging, um, three point nine million.
So, and you're probably aware that we, uh, the council's decided to move forward to develop Rudy Loop into a really wonderful park. And I, I don't know if there's any paths of funding to help us with that because that'll be a wonderful amenity for not only our citizens, but our visitors as well. Is there any, um, types of money to go forward for, for park development?
Um, uh, yes, but it's also, once, once again, it's not as, as robust as, say, transportation or transit or, um, some of the other, uh, buckets of money at the federal level. But there is funding for some stuff like that as well, or projects like that. And we have seen it, and so it would be a.
It's smaller amounts, it won't be millions.
All would be welcomed.
Yes, ma'am.
All would be welcomed.
It would be helpful for peace.
It would be helpful, absolutely. Thank you so much.
And your work.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. And we're surviving in Washington, D.C. for these many years. You hear the, the laundry list of requests around the table here, we have many in our city. You may be familiar with the citizens' pass a couple of years ago, a five hundred and sixty-seven and a half million dollar bond referendum for flood mitigation. To me, does that qualify as infrastructure? I think it should, and that means you help us, you know, with that because it's now close to a billion dollars, we think, in implementing that. Those, a lot of those projects are shovel-ready or getting to be shovel-ready, so we do appreciate your assistance for that. The other question or comment is I didn't see the word education up there on, on any grants or block grants or funds available or any, we have high schools and middle schools and elementary schools that we need to.
Um, we did include the, um, possible K through 12 programmatic funding support in the very last bullet on the last slide.
I missed it.
Um, but the, I, um, but, um, once again, we take our lead from, uh, you and, and the city, and, uh, we are perfectly willing to, uh, address anything you might want us to, uh, go after.
Come in that gap.
The mayor, I think Katie wanted to address Councilman Remick's comment regarding, um, using bond, using this to help support a bond referendum. Go ahead, Katie.
Um, Councilman Remick, we have, um, pursued, oh, uh, a, a brick grant already. We got a twenty-five million dollar grant for four projects along the Eastern Shore Drive. That was our first larger grant. We also got a ten million dollar NIFLIF grant, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, for the, um, in the southern watershed, the.
Marshes project?
Thank you. Back Bay Marshes. Um, and we also have an application that we are working on with VDEM, um, right now for the Lake Bradford, Chub Lake Brick Project as well, which is, I believe, thirty million dollars. We submitted it last year, we got positive reviews back and we're incorporating those comments. So we are, I would say aggressively pursuing, um, state and federal funding for all infrastructure projects, um, transportation, stormwater, anything like that.
Okay, Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank y'all again for the presentation. I want to extend the question about education beyond K through 12 to community college and workforce development. And so thinking through support for not only individuals who are transitioning straight out of high school, but for working adults who may choose to pivot and thinking about, like, the workforce development landscape. I can't think about the article, but I'm sure some of y'all saw it recently, Hampton Roads, our population is declining and much of that has to do with available jobs. And so thinking about how we can help support the labor force in Hampton Roads and Virginia Beach in particular, and looking for funding for adults who are also looking to upskill or to pivot careers and need support doing that so we can help grow our own workforce.
Exactly. Thank you, yes. I mean, that's something we could definitely pursue at, at the, at the request, the official request of the city. But, yeah, those are, those are actually funding opportunities that are becoming more robust at the federal level. And just to piggyback on something that Seth. on something that said about the Back Bay Marsh, the work that you're doing on that, the innovative way you're doing that is really ahead of the curve nationally. And so I cannot say enough about that project. And actually, there's a movement right now to create two separate processes at the Army Corps. I don't know if it's going to happen through the Water Resources Development Authorization Act, but if they take away the structural from the sort of natural approach to doing what you're doing with the Back Bay Marsh, that would make the funding for those kinds of projects even easier, because it's so forward-thinking and scientifically evolved. So yeah, there's a lot of opportunities here, but I especially appreciate what you're saying about the community college approach and the workforce development.
Barbara, and then Sabrina.
That particular project, the marsh restoration, was one I had in mind that, you know, I had understood that once they started funding the project, they were more likely to continue. And with that one having so much of the fish and wildlife participation, because it's really in an area that is the wildlife refuge, I'm really hoping that we'll be able to continue getting a good amount of federal money. So whatever we can do, if you have suggestions for us, but I think that's such a forward-looking project and so unique that we really need to use it as much as we can, not only to get funding, but also for the value that it will be to the whole coast.
Right.
Going to work. So I think we've really got a lot of opportunities there, and if you can help us along, we're receptive.
I can't thank you enough for your, for how, you know, putting so much energy behind that project, because it's a win-win-win-win-win. No, but like, in our arguments, in our conversations with members of the delegation and their staff, it's good for the environment, it's good for resiliency, it's good for conservation, it's good for basically everything. And so it's a unique and special and important way to address some of these issues.
Exciting.
Yeah.
Sabrina.
So, good afternoon. Thanks for this information. I just want to go back to education and just reiterate to my colleagues and speaking with members, a member of the school board just recently, they are concerned about the impact that reducing real estate tax will have on school funding programs and amenities, as well as they're concerned about the fact that the state has not really stepped up to the plate to do their part. And so we certainly do want to make sure we're advocating at all levels to make sure that our education resources are there for our school, for our teachers and our children. So hopefully that will be a priority that we will move forward with.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if I can finish up with a, you know, touch of a regional effort, but definitely affects us. You know, I'm currently the chair of the Hampton Roads Military Federal Facilities Alliance. And a couple of months ago, we were up at the Pentagon and spoke to every undersecretary or assistant secretary of all the branches between here and Fort Eustis. A common theme was quality of life issues that are necessary for recruitment and retention. And that includes, you know, things like affordable housing, base infrastructure, barracks on the base, hangar repair, and, you know, things of that nature, along with things like, you know, daycare centers and things like that. And so I think, you know, it's very important. And one of the, quite frankly, one of the things they said that was a barrier right now was all these continuing resolutions going on in terms of effective budgeting and, you know, using resources properly. So the thing is, I think that, you know, once again, whether it be Ocean or Little Creek, or, you know, whatever we have, you know, it's really vital, you know, to national security that, you know, these things are taken into considerations. And then also, along with, you know, Jennifer was talking about with workforce development, the shipyard over the next couple of years is going to require 5,000 more employees, because they have to ramp up production of naval vessels, you know, to keep current what's going on on the world stage. And so once again, I think that's going to be, you know, mission critical, you know, going forward. So I just want to put an exclamation point of what Councilmember Ralph said. So, you know, there's a lot of ass out there right now. But, you know, I think all of it's very important. And I appreciate the work that you all do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thanks a bunch.
We really appreciate it, sir. Thank you very much.
Really appreciate you folks and our home team, too. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Manager, you got a briefing.
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, our planning department will come and give council a pending planning items update for the item that you will take up at your next council meetings and some to... Next council meeting, right? There's some next ones? None of them are today, right?
This evening and then the 16th.
Okay, and what item will be for today and what will be for the 16th? All right. Thanks, Kate.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. As we just discussed, I will be going over the planning items. There's one on the agenda for this evening, and then several items on your January 16th agenda. So the one for this evening should look familiar. This was deferred from your December 12th hearing. As a reminder, this is a subdivision variance request for property located at the intersection of Oceanfront Avenue and 86th Street. This is a subdivision variance request to Section 4.4(c) of the subdivision regulations, since the proposed lot does not meet the lot width requirement for corner lots. The request remains relatively unchanged. They are still working through design for the proposed driveways. It is my understanding that the applicant is requesting this item to be deferred to the February 6th hearing. All right, moving on to the January 16th agenda, there are a total of six planning items for consideration. Item one is an application for a street closure request to close a portion of an unimproved lane adjacent to 7502 and 7504 Atlantic Avenue, and this is located within the north end of the city. More specifically, the applicant is requesting to incorporate a 15-foot by 35-foot portion of the unimproved lane into their property, which fronts on Atlantic Avenue. The lot currently contains a duplex, and the area to be closed has been maintained by this applicant for the past several years. Similar requests have been made in the past for the southern portion of this lane. They were approved back in 2020, and then the northern portion, the closures were approved in 2022. Staff did hold a viewers' meeting on October 20th for this request, during which time it was determined that there would be no public inconvenience as a result of this closure. It was determined, though, that we would need a drainage easement over the entire portion to be closed. Staff has not received any opposition to the request, and the planning commission did vote unanimously in favor of the item.
So when this is approved, what's the process? Do they take title? Is there money exchanged?
Yeah, so the city attorney's office handles determining the underlying fee and setting the fee associated with that exchange. But yes, that would happen. They have a year to do that closure from the approval date. All right, item two is a conditional use permit request for a tattoo parlor. This is within a suite of the Executive Cove Shopping Center located at 5608 Virginia Beach Boulevard. The applicant intends to offer traditional tattooing services within an existing 1,700 square foot suite. With the exception of changes to the exterior signage, there are no other changes proposed to the exterior of the site. The applicant is proposing or anticipating four to six employees for the use. Staff has received two letters of support from existing tenants in the shopping center. We have not received any opposition, and the planning commission did recommend approval of the application on the consent agenda. Item three is a request for a CUP. This is for a residential kennel for property located at 5205 Shore Drive. The applicant intends to house five personal dogs within the existing single-family residence on the site. The zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit if more than four dogs are to be housed within a residential property. The applicant has advised that only four dogs will be let outside at any given time, which staff has included as a recommended condition of approval. Another condition that we are recommending is the prohibition of any doggy daycare, training, or boarding services on-site, as those uses would not be permitted within the residential district. Staff has received a total of five letters of support for this application. There was an adjacent property owner who spoke in opposition at the planning commission hearing. He expressed concerns regarding a kennel in the neighborhood and then potential decreases to property values. In response to that concern, the planning commission, they did recommend approval of the application, but they modified condition one. And that would require that it would be approved for five dogs at the beginning, but should one dog either be rehomed or whatnot and is no longer residing on the property, then the maximum number of dogs on-site would be limited to four. And like I said, with that amendment, the planning commission did recommend approval.
Josh? I believe I watched his planning commission here. Is this the one where it was her mother or son?
Yes. And she was amenable to that, yes. All right, items four and five, this is a request for rezoning from O2 Office District to B2 Community Business District, and then a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor. This is for a property at 3396 Holland Road. So the applicant intends to rezone the property to operate a beauty spa at this location, and that spa would include permanent makeup services. Since tattoo parlors are not permitted in the O2 District, the rezoning to B2 was required, and the applicant intends to operate existing suites within the building on-site. Typical hours of operation will be 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. There is adequate parking on-site. Staff has not received any opposition to this request and has received five letters of support from existing clients. The applicant has another salon on Virginia Beach Boulevard. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the application on their consent agenda. All right, the last item is another... Yes?
As a tattoo pilot on Virginia Beach Boulevard?
The proposed location, it's just south of the intersection of Holland Road and Stone Shore.
Okay, but you mentioned there's another one.
Yes, that's in the Byler Building on, off of the Boulevard.
Which building?
The Byler Building.
By Rosemont.
Yes.
Right up in the second floor.
Michael Cultural and the Arts.
All right, the last item is another CUP for a tattoo parlor. This is within the Shambord Commons Shopping Center at 332 North Great Neck Road. This applicant intends to offer permanent makeup services within two suites of the existing shopping center. Adequate parking is available on-site, with the exception of changes to signage. The exterior will remain as-is. We have not received any opposition to this request, and the planning commission did vote in favor of the application on their consent agenda. And that concludes my briefing. Yes?
Is this going to be a new store, or Rumpelstiltskin closed?
Yes, it's closed, and this will occupy the two suites previously occupied by Rumpelstiltskin.
It's a good store, interesting store. Okay, Josh?
I've got a quick question for this one, too. If the use is permitted for permanent makeup, does that also include approval for tattoos?
No, we write the conditions, if it's, if the request is for permanent makeup, that's the, written into the conditions, that that is the only form of tattooing that would be permitted. So if somebody wanted to come back with a traditional tattoo parlor, they'd have to modify that conditional use permit.
Amelia?
Oh, no.
Okay.
We're talking about something else. Josh and I formatted it to do with the tattoos. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. We are moving right along. Okay, any council liaison reports? Okay, how about discussions, initiatives, or comments? Anything? Okay, Michael? Mayor, I just want to share some good news that a number of us had the opportunity to celebrate New Year's Eve at the Philippine Cultural Center of Virginia. And during their really special evening of entertainment and cuisine and dancing, they did recognize a member of the city staff who I just want to give a pleasant shout-out to. Hillary Plait was recognized from Cultural Affairs, was recognized for her outstanding work and partnership with, to support the Philippine Cultural Center of Virginia, QFAT, which is the Council of United Filipino Organizations of Tidewater, and really the PhilAAM community generally. And that really just shows and demonstrates how much the center and the community appreciate Hillary's work, but really the work that Cultural Affairs as a department engages in, as well as, you know, the entire workforce in the city of Virginia Beach. And I just want to make sure that she knows that we really, I appreciate her hard work, and I think it's really outstanding as well. Okay, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. So just as a reminder, this evening, we're going to be recognizing Envision Lead Grow, and it's not a formal proclamation, but it, these young budding entrepreneurs will be coming to observe the business of the council and the executive work that we do as they prepare to become executives themselves. So I'll give a brief shout-out to them, but wanted to invite anyone who wanted to take a moment to take a picture with them, if that's something that you'd like to do, if we can include that as part of the recognition, so they can have a little moment and then get on with the business of council.
Not a problem at all. Thank you. Barbara?
I had an email just before I came today from Mark Reed, that he's been in conversation with the sheriff, and as it's planned now, they will do the work on the Brown Cemetery tomorrow. And if everything goes well, they will hope to have that back in shape. So I really appreciate the joint working together on this. But now I think we really need to put something in place to follow up and make sure there's an ongoing maintenance plan for that, however we can work it out. I don't think it's quite fair to have the burden on the homeowners association, but maybe we can come up with something.
Okay, great. Amelia?
I want to say that we had a wonderful time for last night on the town. They had over 4,000 out there, and it was very safe. I want to recommend Janie Evans-Cox for putting a really well-organized CBA. And I had a colleague with me that stayed almost till midnight, Josh Shulman, and I stayed till midnight. Almost till midnight. Well, you know, he had to get home.
Married with children.
Married with children. So he almost stayed there. But, you know, afterwards, got the champagne and toasted in the New Year in my district. I wanted to give a shout-out to CBA and Janie, the associations, and all the businesses. We had a really safe night and got a photo with who? New Movement? The New Movement.
Okay, Barbara?
Well, in District Two, we had our celebration at the Senior Resource Center, and we dropped the ball at 4 o'clock, so everybody could get home. Get home before dark.
I'll remember that for next year, Barbara. Okay, Josh?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And if I can, just piggyback on Councilwoman Ross Hammond's comments. I'd like to give a shout-out and my appreciation to our police officers, mounted patrol, and sheriff's deputies who were out until past midnight in the cold. And we're just lucky to have them out there, and it was a wonderful celebration.
It was. My granddaughter thought, "Are you going to be Cinderella?" I said, "No, I'm not going to lose a shoe. I'm going to just be there and enjoy it."
Hey, Rosemary.
Well, and last night was the last night for the holiday lights for this year, and I think it was a big success. And I think it was really cool that they had two nights of bike rides, you know, the first night and the last night. I told Jennifer, next time she needs to wave as she goes by. But I think people really, really enjoyed it. And again, like I said before, the staff did a fantastic job this year in the way they set, they had the setup with people going through. It seemed to work out really well. But it's a great thing, just, it's really sad, actually, when they, when the lights go out. It's like, it's like all the Christmas lights around the city. Very enjoyable this year.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Chris?
Yes, sir.
And then Sabrina.
This is more of a comment. On October 24th, we had the FY 2425 Focus Action Plan presentation. And within that, there is the IAP2's Public Participation Spectrum. And the first public participation goal that was identified was to inform. And the goal was to provide the public with balanced and objective information to assist them in understanding the problem, alternatives, opportunities, and our solutions. And then the promise to the public was, we will keep you informed. A lot of times, constituents will email us, and they don't know that we've talked about an issue. And so one of the issues that came up was customer service to the citizens and delays as it related to the recycling. as it related to the recycling last year, waste management, and TFC. And so I wanted to just submit to the public the memo from Public Works on December fifteenth, which was in response to concerns regarding the delays in curbside collections of recyclables, because we are looking at increases. And I'll just briefly read, "In recent months, the city's recycling contractor, TFC Recycling, has been unable to maintain a normal collection schedule, which has led to significant delays in the collection of curbside recycling." So that's the issue. "On average, TFC Recycling fails to service nearly half of their routes each day. With carryover from one day to the next, service days per week have stretched from four to seven, with noticeable areas not receiving service at all. These delays have taxed waste management staff, as well as our residents. On average, waste management processes, one hundred and fifteen work orders for missed streets each day. These notifications come to waste management through resident complaints. Acknowledging their short staffing and equipment issues, staff from Public Works, Waste Management met with TFC's leadership team on November seventh. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss opportunities where Waste Management could assist TFC to get them back on schedule. During this meeting, the active waste administrator, Jerry Brown, offered to review TFC's route maps and offered the opportunity for six waste management drivers to work as temporary employees with TFC Recycling on their days off. Waste management drivers were hand-selected based on their ability to service residential customers quickly and efficiently. As of this writing, TFC Recycling has not accepted either offer from the city." And so I'd asked the manager, Public Works was here, to answer, is the city compensating? If they were to accept this offer, would the city be compensating these workers, or would they become, in effect, employees of waste of TFC? Mr. Mayor, Public Works Director, come in, speak on this matter.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Taylor, the offer was made that the employees on their off days, so I think Saturday, Sunday, Monday, could be used to augment TFC. TFC would then be compensating those employees outside of their regular city pay. The reason we made this unusual offer is because our drivers are familiar with our routes, we thought that that would be something that would help them. They would not be operating city vehicles, they would not be operating any, expending any type of city funds. It was just an offer to allow our staff who were interested in doing something in their off time that would benefit the taxpayers, or the ratepayers, I should say.
Earlier in the year, we, we talked, has the vacancy for our drivers improved in terms of waste management? Have we increased, I know we went from seven to, I believe, twenty-two. Have we been able to reduce that number?
Yes, sir. The changes that the council approved for us to make in terms of compensation have been very effective, in terms of compensation and also some hiring bonuses. The work that Human Resources has done has helped us, helped us tremendously. I think we're down in single digits, at least we were about a week or so ago, last time that I got an update on it.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. Sabrina Dunmack?
Thank you. So I wanted to make light of the fact that I attended the homeless memorial service December twenty-first, and the mayor attended as well. But it certainly is a sober reminder, because in that service, there were at least ten people who lost their lives the previous year, twenty-twenty-three, to drug overdose and other issues. And so one of the themes that I can remember is focusing on mental health, certainly very important, as well as ensuring that we have the proper resources available to address individuals who do experience homelessness. And so also, in the service, it was a very nice service that was put together by our staff, who did an excellent job in remembering those who lost their lives. There's also a choral ensemble that came from Salem High School, I believe, or, excuse me, Landstown High School. They did a phenomenal job singing, and their presentation was wonderful. But I mentioned that to make sure that we keep ourselves laser focused on what happens in the lives of those who are homeless in our city, and how much they need our support. And we need to make sure that we make it a priority in the budget to provide the necessary funding to address year-round homelessness in the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Mr. Taylor's comments about waste management reminded me of something that I just wanted to share that happened before the new year. And I just want to thank the Princess Anne High School Wynwood Quintet, as well as the Trombone Choir, led by band director John Boyd. His students, after school, came to the Waste Management Headquarters and played holiday songs for Waste Management workers who were returning from their shift. And it was a really special experience, and, you know, the, all of the city employees, especially Waste Management employees, Public Works employees, Public Utilities employees, they work very hard all year long, and they continue to work twenty-four-seven, and often are underappreciated and undercompensated relative to other positions. And, you know, it was a small but meaningful gesture that those students really, you know, were able to provide in appreciation of all the really outstanding work that they do. I just want to thank the students and the band director, and all of those employees. It was a really nice experience, and I was glad I got to see it.
Hey, anyone else?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to, you know, highlight, you know, Sabrina's comments about the homeless memorial, and, you know, it was, it was indeed touching to be there. But one of the things that we are going to be bringing forward in the next couple of weeks, we've been, as you know, we've been working on the whole pipeline initiative for some months, getting it organized and together, helping our people excel. And one of the things we're going to, the focal point of it is going to be mental health services, combined with physical health services. And then we're also going to be establishing mentoring programs. And we're also going to include workforce development to get, you know, some people that are not destined for college into a pipeline that would be a no-good trade going forward. And so once again, you know, it kind of started off with at-risk youth and helping out there, but it's kind of blossomed now into the elderly, PDSD veterans, and homeless. And we're getting, you know, very good response from the community, from faith-based leaders and from for, for not-for-profits. And, you know, this is going to be a true, you know, community engagement to, you know, address, you know, the problems that we've been talking about. And I thank everybody at the table for their help in this regard.
Okay, at this point, I think we're ready for the council review?
Okay, well, it looks, it looks pretty good. Under ordinance and resolutions, we have speakers for number one. Does anybody else have any issues with the other things, the ordinances?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I had to ask the manager to have staff come in, because there's definitely the majority support for the Virginia Beach Trail. We know the trail's going to link multiple universities, businesses, and employment opportunities. Very exciting announcement, presentation from Becker. Over a hundred individuals and organizations worked over the course of forty years to bring this to pass. And with the decision to have the ordinance today, as well as make the appropriation, and I learned a lot from asking those questions with Becker about the process, the time. I was a little taken back when we had received the email from our legislative director about kind of the next steps in the process. And I know last year, we dealt with processes, and I'd asked the manager to, if we could have the staff here to provide more information to the public, because with this commitment in our Focus Action Plan, the number one commitment was, we will keep them informed. And we haven't had that opportunity to have a discussion or the briefing from our legislative director. And so, Mr. Manager, I don't know if you have the staff ready, but I had several questions that I had emailed. In general, again, there's plenty of support, but with making the decision to use general funds for the three million match, those are public dollars. And so our promise is, we will keep people informed, and that we will work together with you to formulate solutions and incorporate their advice and recommendations. And so I had some questions from the December twelfth email that we received from Mr. McKenzie. The direction that we had received, as it relates to the process, was that the Public Works Department would work to get the funds appropriated, and a grant agreement executed with the Department of Transportation, as we learned from Becker, at minimum several months. And then the second part of the process that was mentioned in that email was that we will provide, and I'm quoting, "We will provide more details on timing for the grant and how the project can move forward in the near future." And we weren't afforded that opportunity before this item came before us. And so I had several questions, if, Mr. Manager, if you could bring the staff up, I would like to ask, so that the public can be informed of what this looks like going forward. Mr. Mayor, Director Kirschman will come and address those, and some of whom I may be able to respond to as well. Let's ask.
Welcome, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to all.
And to everybody in the audience.
I know, Mr. Kirschman.
Good, how are you, sir?
It's about four questions.
Sure.
So, again, the Becker presentation today definitely added some meat to the bone. But can you identify or share with the public the design firm and start date for Phase One, and also the cost?
Sure, we don't have a design firm yet. So once the funding is allocated and appropriated, we would go to a design firm. We're probably looking at a competitively acquired annual services contract. It's a complex project through the bridge over Independence. So we'd probably go with an annual services contract, and that would be just for the design work. Following the design work, then we would bid it out for construction.
Okay. How many phases are currently planned?
There are four phases planned, although one of those future phases may be split into smaller phases, all depending on how the work progresses.
In the Davenport presentation, in the appendix, they noted over almost seventy million dollars in future potential CIP.
Total cost for the entire project, correct.
And so we're at nineteen point five, and then we heard that there's a limited window to apply for these additional monies. What is the earliest date municipalities can apply for the, to start getting the money?
It depends on the funding source you're looking at. So whether that's a RACE grant program, whether that's the Safe Streets for All program, whether that's the Connecting Communities program, there are various federal grant opportunities out there. We just received the Safe Streets for All federal grant, that's credible. We are currently waiting on our Connecting Communities grant, which we applied for back in... Last fall, but we'll find out in the next couple of months if that one, and then we could go for a future RACE grant again. So there are different timings on all of those. So usually they'll come out, you might have about three to four months, the time the notice goes out, when you have to submit your grant application. And these grant applications are extensive.
We did hear from the Becker team about the fact that the Active Transportation Plan met the S A four A requirements. I haven't seen the Eligible Safety Plan. Is that something you could share with council?
I could not, but perhaps Katie or Chad could, or somebody else could regarding the safety plan.
Katie, we can just get in the council's package. We got in the council's package. And then one of the specific, one of the big deals with this announcement is potential future economic development at Town Center. And, God bless you. I had the privilege of sitting in a meeting earlier today and looking at some of those parcels and how maybe they've increased in value. We currently don't have a report on the economic impact of the Virginia Beach Trail, what it's going to have on that Town Center corridor. Would it require direction from City Council to move forward with understanding what this nineteen point five million dollar project is going to, how that's going to impact, let's say, the Circuit City location or...
Sure, any locations along there.
Any locations along that corridor?
If we were to go out and engage a outside consultant to do an in-depth economic impact, we would need that direction and funding. However, there are numerous studies across this country on the impact of trails on adjacent properties and commercial businesses. And our intent was to prepare for you a report for probably this week. It will include some references and citations to existing studies of similar-like trails elsewhere. But if we wanted to do one specific to the VB trail, yes, that would probably take a year or two, you know, go out to bid, get a consultant, have them do the analysis, do the, finalize it, and the funding to do so.
One of the key pieces of the grant that we received was disadvantaged communities. And there's a, I guess, a component that requires almost two point two million dollars be earmarked. How many households is that going to impact? And what is the, what does the process look like to inform those residents that changes may be coming to that, to their community?
Sure, the first, the first thing I can answer, it's roughly twenty thousand homes that meet that federal designation will be impacted by this section of the trail, across the different census tracts. In terms of how we get the word out, everything from press releases to social media, there's not a, for instance, there's not a targeted campaign, we'll individually email every homeowner or person within there, but we get the news out both through press and our typical social media outlets.
And roughly, how many residents would be impacted?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand residents would be impacted.
Okay, and then lastly, again, because we weren't able to hear from Mr. McKenzie, a decision was made that we would tap the general fund. And speaking to the manager, asking some questions, I would have loved to have an opportunity to discuss what options we had. One that came to mind was consideration that the Town Center TIF, which is going to benefit greatly from this VB trail, contributed prorated share of the trail. That opportunity wasn't there, and so I had just a couple of questions, maybe the manager can help. And studying and making sure I understood the purpose of the TIF, I learned that the TIF project was designed to catalyze other development, economic vitality, and benefits, including increased area valuations, and then in parentheses says, wealth, additional job choices, diverse income possibilities, and increased educational, public safety, and recreational use funds, which all fit the VB trail. And one thing that stood out was, once the city's financial obligation is complete, the TIF period ends and the TIF district is dissolved. Mr. Manager, have we met that financial obligation? Mr. Mayor, I don't, to consult with Taylor, I don't know if we've met the obligation from a timeline standpoint. I think there's a timeline that needs to correspond with that. I'm not sure when that timeline expires, but if council desires, council probably could make some changes to the policy. But I'm not sure if we met that obligation yet. That'll be something that I'd have to get the team to look back at. And with the decision to, and again, highly supported on the, there's eight people that signed on, it was interesting, it says, "Upon dissolution of this TIF, all former TIF real estate tax revenues begin flowing back into its predefined fund." My question is, what is the predefined fund? Mr. Mayor, I think that's probably the general fund. So I think once the TIF is dissolved, if council wanted to take an action to dissolve the TIF, then all the monies that would otherwise go into the TIF goes into the general fund for council to appropriate to city services accordingly. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Barbara?
Just a comment. Earlier, when we were hearing from the, the firm, the federal firm, they talked about our staff and how, what a good job they've done. Well, in, in reading the background for this, this grant, that, like I said, it's sort of been on our priority list, but thinking that it was just almost out of reach for so long, and seeing that we're finally getting some of this money. Looking back in, in some of the background, I was, when the Bikes and Trails Advisory Committee was originally formed, I was the council liaison, I think we called it something else then, but anyway, I was rereading some of the, the records from those early years, when we were kind of classed as being about the worst in the area for having trails. We just didn't have anything. And reading back over what we've done since then, and getting to this point is really amazing. But I read about Chad and his involvement with those early years in trails. So if we want an expert on what we've done in the past fifteen years for trails, he's sitting over there, and I imagine he's probably got a pretty good, for him, a really big grin on his face to be able to think that he's going to be working with this project. So congratulations. I know it's, it's been a lot of work on your part.
Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Kirschman, and Chad, to you as well. It is exciting to be able to embark on, on this project. And I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've... And I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've applied for this particular grant at least four times?
This is our fifth federal grant. This was our first Safe Streets for All grant, or second, sorry, second Safe Streets for All, fifth federal grant.
Okay. And I was, I was going back, and I believe, and I know this council recently affirmed the VB Trails project as, you know, as recently as last month, when we earmarked the 902,000 from the Dominion proceeds. But, you know, each year, when we adopt a comprehensive, each update to the comprehensive plan, the Active Transportation Plan identifies the VB Trail as a top priority. And I was reading the grant application as well. There was a public survey done in 2019, and it revealed that 2/3 of our residents said that they'd like to use active transportation if it were available, but 3/4 of the respondents said that they don't feel that walking or biking is a viable option because of safety and infrastructure constraints. So not just the crossing over Independence, which is huge, 10,000 lanes of traffic, but there are seven ungrade crossings or at-grade crossings that will be improved with ADA-accessible ramps and curbs. I know that the environmental and geotechnical review, at least preliminarily, was completed when we were looking at extending the tide through that corridor. And I also learned that Virginia Beach Boulevard ranks in the top 1% of corridors in the Commonwealth with pedestrian crashes statewide. And Independence Boulevard is even higher. It's in the top 10th of a percent because of the limited presence of crosswalks. And I believe, since 2015, it said that there were over 50 pedestrian crashes in that, in that area. So, and I don't think that there's any other way to demonstrate council's priority for a particular project than to put our money where our mouth is. And we can, we can certainly talk about how important a project is, but to fund it is a different story. Because that, that obviously gives you all direction and you all a message that this is a priority for us. It touches half a dozen council districts. And this is a citywide win, and a win for all of us and all of those who've worked so hard over the last 40 years to make it a reality. So thank you for your work. Looking forward to seeing what's next.
Thank you.
Ms. Henley, do you remember, when was the first time this request, I guess, like appeared in the budget? So like, to even fund the VB Trail, how long has it been?
For this particular project, I don't know exactly. But I know we've asked for it several times and, you know, looked longingly at it. Of course, this was going to be a part of the mass transit project. And, you know, we still talk about multimodal transportation, and we've got a ways to go to get there. And I think one of the balls that we've dropped is when the light rail referendum failed, that we did not pursue what we were going to do for mass transit that we said we were going to do, we were going to do something in that quarter. So we still need to do that. But this trail maybe can be the thing that jumpstarts what we need to do because that's definitely a transportation quarter. And we, we've got something that, by purchasing that corridor, and of course, we were looking at the whole rails-to-trails concept back in the early years of developing this concept. But when we purchased that corridor, that was a big thing to do. Like, what was it, $40 million? And I just remember being at one of the Bikes and Trails Advisory Committee meetings, and one of the members said, "Well, what if this referendum fails and we don't build the light rail?" And Smarty said, "Well, this will be one of the most expensive trails we've got in the country." And so here we are. But maybe by doing this trail and getting this moving, we can look at this as really a, truly a multimodal quarter because that's lacking in our city is mass transit. And a good transportation system, everybody's got to have a personal vehicle or you just don't go anyplace. And we've got to do something about that, whatever it might be. But this can be a beginning.
Anybody else? Chris, and then Worth.
Thank you. And Councilman Shaw, I'm thankful you brought up the 2019 in the survey. Maybe, I know you, Mr. Manager, and Michael, maybe can help me. From 2019 to 2023, prior to the 750,000 that we received, how, how much have we appropriated to that CIP?
Chad, I don't know if it's definitely, but it's...
I think it, I think it first appeared in fiscal year 15, but it was never funded.
Right.
Yes. So pretty certainly zero, sir.
So hopefully, as we go into the budget and we know that $70 million, maybe this year we'll make it a priority to add something year by year so that way we don't have a big chunk to bite off at the end.
I do remember in minutes that I was reading last night that the comment in the minutes for the session, and I guess that was, what, 2016, that the loss of the referendum totally changed the plans for this project. So we really had to go back and determine, you know, because if we had built the light rail, the trail would have been a part of that project. That was a part of the funding that was estimated for the total cost. So with the loss of the light rail, then we were left just with this trail project, which, and I think the way the minutes said was, well, we've got to start all over on how we're going to deal with this trail. So that was a major setback.
And the day after the election, Aubrey Lane called and said, "We want the $20 million back."
Yeah, I know it.
Patrick? Mr. Mayor, the council member, Henley, your memory, once again, just trumps everybody. You know, it's amazing. But you're right. I think in fiscal year 15, it was the Transit Corridor developed its CIP, and the trail was supposed to be alongside that. So when council, once the referendum passed and that went away, that's when it kind of zeroed out. So there was money for it when that CIP was initially planned to be funded. But once it got renamed, Virginia Beach Trail, it was what we were asking for, but we weren't able to incorporate into budget because it kind of came around the COVID years and with the, when everything else kind of happened in the world with the flood protection program and Hurricane Matthew, that I think it fell to the wayside by that, by the council at that time.
Okay, Worth, and then Josh.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Kirschman, Mr. Morris. And congratulations to you and to everyone else who's contributed to this moment. And I also want to thank Walter Camp, who's been, who's walked the VB Trail, I think, from, all the way from east to west, and he's still with us. But as a member of Council District 6, which is the eastern part of the city, the northeastern part of the city, what we're going to vote on tonight doesn't touch my district. But I'm thrilled to see the needle be moved tonight with this because I do think this is a major project for the city to unify and tie the city together, both for citizens to recreate, but also for workforce, transportation, and the futures, I mean, it will connect, I hope, eventually to our loop at the oceanfront. So in light of the loss of light rail, which, you know, is a, that train has already left the station, I think this is, really helps move the needle. And I congratulate everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And while my memory isn't as good as Councilwoman Henley's, I do recall that although this project was in the requested but not funded column for a while, I think part of the council's direction was go find third-party money because it's a big chunk of change. And, and now we have, thankfully, so. Just want to add that.
Hey, anyone else at this point?
Go on with the agenda.
Just real quick. Just to say that if you, there is a similar trail in Indianapolis. I forget the name of it, but there is a video on it. And, and it's amazing, you know, it goes through neighborhoods. You see people walking with their kids and bikes and everything. And then they got commerce there that, you know, you know, along the way, kiosks and, you know, through things. It's a really, real good economic thing. And the thing is, us being a healthy city, you know, getting people out and walking, and especially now, we're getting into, you know, with all the sports, with the soccer, and all the other action sports that are maybe coming on the table right here, and, you know, synergy with the SportsCenter, this could be a real win-win. Okay, that was it.
If it's the same trail I'm thinking about in Indiana, and all that one goes through Carmel Clay, Indiana, it actually cuts right through a rec center, and the rec center spans the entire trail. So you're biking through and you're working out, looking at people bike underneath you as they bike through. It's really interesting.
Yep. There you go. Hey, thanks a lot, Michael.
Thank you very much.
Rosemary.
So I think number two, a couple of people are going to be standing.
Anyone else standing on?
Yes, I'm a member of the Board of Directors, not executive board. I have a letter on file.
Thank you.
Am I on the Board of Directors?
On the advisory council.
Advisory council, okay. Just, just double checking.
Okay. Everybody okay with number three, four, and five? And then, under planning, that's going to be deferred till February 6th. Is that right? Councilman Rick?
On the planning item, deferred to February 6th.
Deferred to February 6th.
Okay. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A 3. And that would involve District 3 and District 6. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A 7, and that would be at Ventura Park. And then, personal matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A 2. Council appointees, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. So I have a motion.
Second.
Call call. Aye.
Councilman Henley? Aye. Councilman Maribek?
Aye.
Councilman Ralph? Aye. Councilman Solomon?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Turn it to dust.
Aye.
Ross Nelson?
Aye.
Move by.
Aye.
Hey, we are recessed into...